From New York.
Are we ready?
And we are recording.
Excellent. Okay. Sure. Okay, it is six o'clock. Welcome, everybody. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, December 5th, 2022. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. Just a reminder, anybody speaking, please speak directly into the microphone. This meeting is being recorded. Provide your name and address for the record, please. Right now, I would like to look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to actually move, if I could, 10A up before 8. There's a gentleman in the audience. I'd like to get him out before all these guys give their big wonderful presentations.
Okay, so we have a motion.
What's that?
What we could do, I was gonna have the presentations go first and then
Oh.
that item. So you're right.
Move it before that even?
Move it before 8.
Move it before 8.
Make it 5A.
Doesn't matter. I was gonna have the presentations go first and then that item, but.
That's fine. Yeah, so.
Is there a motion, so that I can keep track of this?
Before it. Yeah, move it before 8, just like you originally said.
Yeah, as I said. Good, yeah.
So, the motion from Trustee Rodden is that we make a change to the agenda, moving item 10A, just 10A, to follow item 7B before 8A. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a second from Trustee Andrews. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Any other discussion on the agenda? If not, then I will look for a motion to approve the changed agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion from Trustee Schneider, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Trustee Andrews. All those in favor of approving the changed agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. At this time, let's stand and say the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, at this time, item number five, public appearances. This is the time when the public may come forward to address the Village Board on items other than those appearing on the agenda. If you would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, please come forward, provide your name, your address, and let us know what's on your mind. Anyone? Okay. Having no public appearances, we will move on to item number six, presentations. First presentation that we have this evening, item 6A, New Water Annual Update. Administrator Kaker, Executive Director Tom Sigmund, welcome.
All right, thank you. So this is, I believe, the third go-around inviting New Water to come and give a brief update on what's going on with New Water and with special interest towards the budget. And Executive Director Tom Sigmund is here, along with his Associate Nathan Qualls. So with that, Tom, I'll hand it off to you, and you can run with it.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Nate Qualls is New Water's Director of Technical Services. The slide you're seeing is our vision protecting our most valuable resource, water. So as we're looking at our 2023 budget for proposed expenses, operation and maintenance expenses are going up 8%. Debt service and annual capital expenses are going up 6.5%, with an overall increase in expenses of 7.3%. You can see from the graph, we're running about 54% of our total expenses or operation and maintenance and 46% capital and debt services. Next slide. The O and M at 8% is more than we've seen in the past few years. And I just wanted to bring some items out for attention. The inflation increases in prices for materials has hit us as well as others. Some of these are increases in the cost, unit cost of the various items, and then some of it is we're using a little bit more of them in our 2023 budget. So you can see our disinfection chemicals up quite a bit, some of the other chemicals, diesel fuel, our purchased electricity up 25%. Disposal of the ash, our market adjustment to wages is up 4%. Health insurance, a little over 5%. And then our plant maintenance and repairs is up 18%. We do have both the cost of some of the components, as well as we're doing some unique maintenance this next year. Next. In addition to the O and M, our long-term capital projects, so this is not all gonna be spent in 2023 budget, but it's a look forward at where we're seeing our capital costs on projects to go up. You can see that wastewater treatment facilities are the majority of the work that's in the light blue. We do have a fair amount of money to be spent in our interceptor system, the big pipes, and then some in annual capital projects that we pay cash for as we go along. What we're gonna see likely is some slip of some of the projects. We're not likely to be as aggressive in '24, '25, and '26 as we think, just mainly because of lead times of getting some materials for some of these capital projects. And then what it will likely do is a little lower in the first couple of years and fill it out back in '30, '31, '32. So, next slide. So, in order to pay for the expense, we have to offset that with revenues. We're looking to go, the revenue's up that same 7.3%. Our revenue comes from a number of sources, the largest, the vast majority comes from our municipal user fees, from our municipal customers. That is going up 4.9%. I know when we came back, back in April and met with you, we had talked about over the next 10 years, looking at about 5.5% to 7% increase in municipal user fees per year for 10 years in order to pay for the capital. We are under that for 2023 by just a little bit. And then a significant amount of money comes from what we call mill charges. Those are two mill Green Bay Packaging and Procter &amp; Gamble. Then we have other miscellaneous. We are not planning to make any contributions to our capital reserve this year, so that's why that's down a million dollars. Next slide. So what, you pay us based on the flows and loads that they measure that you discharge into our interceptor system? And so what's important, what comes back to you is the constituents of that wastewater that you give us. And that's charged based on five unit parameters, as well as a, what has been called a fixed capital charge. So you see volumes going up a little bit. Biochemical oxygen demand and suspended solids measures of the strength of the wastewater are going up more. Phosphorus is going up more and nitrogen is going up a small amount. The increases in those are in relation to where our costs are in terms of how our facilities, our assets are charged back. So this in relation, you see that we've got more costs going into suspended solids than other things. Next slide. So just for a comparison, for the Village of Swamaco sewer charges, in 2023, we are budgeting just about $950,000 of sewer charges to the village. Our 2022 budget was about $980,000. And then 2021 actual, so we don't have actuals for 2022 yet, but our 2021 actual for the village was just about a million dollars. So flow and load projections are down slightly for 2023 for the village compared to our 2022 budget with this largest reduction in suspended solids. And our team, New Water works with Andy and your team to try to make that projection of where you think you're going to be in 2023 as you look at both your residential growth, as well as any industrial discharge components. Next slide, please. In addition to the 2023 budget, just wanted to give you an update on plans, projects that are coming out of the liquids facilities plan that are going to be focused for us in 2023. Our Green Bay facility, we have a sledge thickening project that is going to begin construction. And we also have our primary and secondary clarifiers at our Green Bay facility in the north plant that is going to begin construction just a little later than that in 2023. The thickening project is an $18 million project. The primary and secondary clarifier rehab project is a $43 million project. And the DePere facility, influent pumping and headworks improvements, we are starting design on that project. We have selected a consultant, and that design will carry us through all of 2023 with construction to be likely in sometime in 2024. And that's a $26 million projected project. Next slide. So in addition to the facilities plan, things that are going on, we spent a good part of this year and previous years, the previous year, working on infiltration and inflow reduction. That is clear water that makes it into the sewer system. It starts at individuals' homes and makes it into their sewer system, comes into the sewer systems owned by the village and other municipalities, as well as clear water that comes into our interceptor system. And so we have, as we talked about in our facilities plan, we have too much clear water that comes in and at times can be a significant problem both locally and system-wide. So we've been working on this, and we're going to continue that work in 2023 and beyond. And the five main areas that we're going to focus our attention, it's not gonna be sequential. We are going to be working across likely the top three at the same time, informing, so educational assistance, technical assistance, and then financial assistance as we start to look for how these activities can be paid for. That information will lead to what likely will be some limits on what would be considered to be excess flow and work with the communities to stay below that amount through rehabilitation and other work. And then compliance, once, there is going to be a compliance approach that has, so make sure we don't exceed the limits in the future. This is a long-term project, program, not a project, it's a program, and we're going to be working with our communities over quite a long time on this, but it is something we have to get started soon. Last slide, so that's our presentation. We do have a budget hearing and adoption at our commission meeting that's coming up on Wednesday, December 7th. It is going to begin at 8:30 in the morning. It's going to be either in person or via Zoom. And if anyone has any comments that they wish to make to our commission, you can either give them to me, and I will convey them to the commission, or take it in writing, or in person at that meeting. And then immediately after that meeting, we will send a notification to all of our customers through the Public Works Directors of what our actual budget is. So many of our customers have already set their rates for 2023, but there's a few that wait for us to get. So that's all that I have for the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Go ahead. The fixed charge for the municipal user fees, or no, the fixed charge increase, actually a 6%? Andy, did we have that in our budget? Okay.
So just one question. Reduced the flow and load projection for 2023, that's down somewhat, obviously. Is that based on what you're seeing thus far in 2022?
Yes, and what your projections are for '23. I'll ask Nate, his team does most of that projection, if you'd want to weigh in on that.
Yeah, like many communities, the large fluctuations in flow and loads that occur are often industrial. And I don't think that's largely different here in Swamaco. So we've been watching some industrial impacts on especially VOD and TSS, and so working with Andy and his team to try to project that out. And so that's been the main area of focus on forecasting.
And Andy, if I may, there's been an industrial customer that's been paying more attention to pretreatment, and so that's helping those numbers go down.
Yeah, we saw a reduction, and I can't remember the gal's name on your Labs team, I think it was, but she, you know, her name? Holly, yep. We were through like June, and we, you know, both agreed that we think we could lessen that amount a little bit going through the year with the first six months of data. So we're comfortable with that '23 budget. You know, if something changes, you know, time will tell. I think we're in a good spot.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah. Could you elaborate on the model you had mentioned before? And the slides where you're talking about setting limits and then enforcing that? Just what are you envisioning for that?
Well, what we envision, we already know that three times in the last five years, we've had more flow that was coming into our system than we are designed to handle. The reason we were able, so the design typically is, all the flow is pumped into our DePere facility and Green Bay facility, so it requires pumps. And the design capacity is based on one unit at each facility out of service. The way we were able to handle that flow for those times was we had all units available in service. So it's one that if we would've had some unit out of maintenance, we would not have been able to convey all the water at the time it was coming to us. So we know that we have a clear water issue, and that's not because people gave us more wastewater. Typically, we get around 40 million gallons a day of wastewater coming into the system. Some of that is clear water, but most of it's wastewater. On those eight days, we were over, we were at about 160 million gallons a day. So that's all clear water that comes into the system. So the program that we've been, and we've been working with a stakeholder advisory group, which is some of our municipal customers, and trying to inform all of the municipal customers. And this was the approach that we had talked about. So it's gonna start out with making sure that people understand what the issues are. So that's the educational assistance, both the public, just to make sure that we'll go have information that we can provide to the municipalities to help people understand the impact and what they can do. Because quite a bit, more than half of the length of pipe in our overall system is between someone's home and the road. And so typically, what we found, we don't know exactly for our system, is 50 to upwards of maybe 70% of the clear water that's coming in is coming in off of private property. And so that's part of the education and outreach to the public as well, so that they can understand how their systems operate. And then the technical assistance is working with our communities so that they, we do a lot of full monitoring in our system in sub-basins, is to help work with our communities so that they can understand where there might be some areas of high infiltration and inflow that may be the places they could work first and we would work. The financial assistance is trying to figure out what role does New Water play in helping communities? It's your money that comes in. What role does New Water play in helping communities deal with some of these issues in a more timely manner? And then again, that flow limits is saying, this is the amount that I can accept, and then eventually it's gonna have to have some kind of compliance. I may have gone way past where you're.
Well, I was kind of, I was focusing on the flow limits and compliance because that seems like a good system. If I'm, if my imagination is that that system says, hey, your municipality should have just normal operating, a certain percentage of inflow and infiltration, but you're exceeding that by 10%. So we expect you to go fix it. If you don't go fix it, then we're going to either apply some sort of a financial remedy to that or something of that nature. That rewards a municipality that is constantly on the lookout and constantly trying to fix these problems. And maybe, I guess I'll use the word, punishes a municipality that just doesn't care.
It is certainly an approach that tries to get the work done as
Is that the approach?
as possible and sticks.
Is that essentially the approach you're going for?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is more for Alex. How are we doing with the Board of Directors and getting a voice for the surrounding municipalities on that board?
So a couple of years ago, we had that New Water Municipal Committee, and we had nominated somebody to the County Executive, and it's my understanding that that individual will be nominated later this month for next year's cycle. So it's a step in the right direction.
So he is gonna, that individual, and I don't know if it's a he or she, but they are gonna be nominated by Troy then?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And it won't technically be from the New Water Municipal Committee. He also applied on his own, and I believe that that's how Executive Strickenbach is selecting that person. So it won't be technically, you know, like a municipal representative, but it's somebody that we have vetted as municipalities and approved of.
Good deal.
Where does he live? Is he within the?
Ledview.
Ledview, is he a customer?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is, that's a great step. Thank you for your work on that.
Sure.
And thank you for your presentation.
Nothing else? Gentlemen, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you both. Have a great Christmas.
All right. Moving on, Presentation 6B, 2023, 2027 Trail, Pedestrian, and Bicycle Plan. Director Lemke and Brown County Senior Planner Devon Yoder.
Thank you. The Village partnered with the Brown County Planning Commission to update the Village Trail, Pedestrian, and Bicycle Plan. The current plan was from 2010 through 2015. A lot of the key points in my memo we covered in the presentation, but just wanted to point out that the recommendation, our intended as a guide for the village, will consider any future plans and paths. And it's a visionary document for any potential future development within the village, neighborhoods, parks, and grant opportunities, grant funding opportunities. Why it's important to have a document like this that's updated. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Devon Yoder, and he has a presentation to showcase the plan.
Thank you very much for letting me be here. Try and lean forward. I'm just going to give a quick overview of the plan. Again, as Nick said, the reason for doing the update is so the Village has a current plan, and that's primarily for when funding opportunities arise or if there is funding opportunities you want to look at, then you have a current document that you can point to in doing that. And what this plan did was, again, look at the existing village plan, and it stayed very much with what had been created before. So while the document itself is longer, the recommendations largely echo what the village already had on file. And again, this, the plan is a visionary document. It's to help village leaders in decision-making. So there isn't any obligation for any specific thing with this. It's just that, again, when the opportunities come and or if there's interest in something, this is to help with those future decisions. And ultimately, it's up to the village as far as how and when that's implemented. And really, my role with this was just working with village staff and stakeholders to put the plan together. For the process that we did for this, we, I worked with Nick, and he put together an advisory committee in March. And then, once that was assembled, we worked on reviewing the existing plan with that committee and then also put out public input, both through online and paper surveys and also an online mapping exercise that people could use and give us input on either things that worked well, things that people wanted to see more of, and just gathering some of that information. That was kind of through the summer. And then, at the end of that, then I worked more on the recommendations part, and that was in late summer, early fall. The Technical Advisory Committee, this is just the kind of listing of different positions and people represented as part of this. But everything that, we met four times in the process, they all had good input on things. And again, part of the inclusion of the different folks on that was to kind of make sure we're at least covering all the bases as we're looking at.
Who was on that committee from the trustees? Was that you?
I was on.
Oh, okay.
So in the recommendations and implementations in the plan, there, of course, the primary part is the physical infrastructure recommendations. Those, again, largely mirrored what was already existing in the previous plan. And really, I think the previous plan had done a good job of identifying different things. And so really, it seemed like good to continue in line with those. We did do some updates just on recommended kind of implementation priority. And again, it's not something that has to specifically be followed because we never know how things might fall, and the right opportunity might come at the right time for something that might fall outside of that. But the point of just recommending the implementation priority is, you know, again, if there are opportunities, those are kind of the things you might want to tackle first and might have the biggest benefit right off the bat. There are also some program and operational recommendations, and then a couple zoning code items that could potentially help, and then different possible funding sources that are listed. In terms of the approval process to get that to this meeting, the Plan Advisory Committee meeting, or Committee in October recommended approval to be reviewed at the Park Rec Forestry and Trails Committee. In November, then, we presented that at that meeting, or I presented it then. We also included with that public open house for that, or prior to that meeting starting, so interested public could come and comment or if they had questions. And that was a good session that we had. And then, at that meeting, the Park Rec Forestry and Trails Committee recommended approval and bringing it forward to the Village Board where we are tonight.
How many people were at that open house?
It was 19.
19 residents?
19.
Yeah, it was well-attended. And I would say half of them spoke. Some had questions, most everyone was pretty much in favor of the plan, just some had specific questions.
Is there a recording of that meeting?
Yes.
Was there any mention of the result of a lot of? Well, you know I'm against the plan. I'm against any plan like this because it tries to force us to spend money we don't have. Was there any mention of that these things are costly? I mean, I know originally I mentioned in like the survey, we ask trick questions in surveys, but we never say, wow, a sidewalk costs not only the sidewalk, but the person to maintain it. I mean, was anything like that mentioned about a cost?
Yeah, we didn't give a specific cost, but if anybody, you know, wanted expansion of a road or trail, obviously, we, you know, made it known that's very costly and that this is planned. It's no guarantees that what's in the plan is gonna be developed. And obviously, we explained what we just explained here. That's a visionary document to be used for any future potential development.
I mean, you said that this is a wish list, you know? And I know later on, we're always gonna be told, well, you approved this in the trail plan. It just, it frustrates me because, well, to start out with, all new subdivisions don't need sidewalks. That's very costly. I mean, a sidewalk like on Lineville, that's understandable, you know, when we, but I don't know. I'm gonna be against this plan tonight. I mean, right down to road construction. I mean, when we redo our roads, I think we've got like 12. I mean, when we, when we redo our roads, I think we've got like twelve roads on there that you've got sited for like a three-foot paved shoulder. So, how much more is that going to be? How many less roads are we going to be able to do per year because we're adding six more feet onto these roads? And not to mention even acquiring property sometimes? I mean, these are very costly things. Everything in here is very expensive to deal with and to make happen. So, I'm, I don't know. I, I'm against this today.
But you have to remember, it is a, it is a wish list, yes.
A wish list, that's an excuse.
But if you don't have the plan, like Devon had said, if you don't have the plan, and we want to put a bike lane, I'll just say a road down Velp, and we get funding for it, then...
Depending on the funding.
Depending on the funding, but without the plan, we can't accept the funding. We, we can't qualify.
If we're not willing to pay for something, but we're only willing to have our hands out for funding too, is it worth it?
Well, we're also looking for the safety factor. People do want to...
Certainly.
Do want to walk or bike on roads, certain roads.
How much?
And it was noted at the Park and Rec meeting at that open house. Roy Kraus was the chairperson, and people were mentioning that, you know, on a certain road, it'd be nice if there was a bike lane. And he goes, yes, it would be. We don't have the money for it. So, you know, there is things that people want, but we don't have the money for it.
How much more, how much more would it be to widen our road six feet? Like, many of these roads are being recommended.
I'd say probably fifteen to twenty percent of the total project cost.
So, we'd be able to redo a lot less roads that way. And, and we, in fact, we've talked about it in our coming years too, about how we add a hundred thousand to the general fund every year. And our original goal was to be a million. Some of us do, some of us don't, think we should keep going beyond a million. So, we may not be able to for certain reasons. And then, we're talking about some roads being twenty percent more expensive, and then we're going to fall way behind. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not, it, it'll, it'll come back to haunt us in the end of the year, or throughout the year as, as you say, well, you approved it in your plans, so, and I am not approving it tonight.
We do have to look at the quality of life too for residents. It is a wish list, and I agree with Trustee Andrews, if you don't have a plan, it really doesn't matter. So, to look at the enhancement of our residents' lives as far as sidewalks and bike lanes and whatnot, I think that has to be taken into consideration. If we don't do it, then why do, why would people want to come here? So, we have to look at it from a long-range goal as that.
I bike throughout the village, and quality of life also isn't running your car into potholes.
Well, I'll chime in. Are you done with the presentation though?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. When I look at a plan, for me, it's important to understand the price tag of a plan. So, when I look at this and I see all these trails, there's a part of me that I, I, some people will find hard to beat, but I do like to bike and walk. That's great, but I don't know how much this costs. And for me, when I look at a plan, it's like if you're landscaping your yard, right? You look at all this awesome landscaping ideas, oh, this is really great. Then you get the price tag and go, whoa, let's back up. Is there a way to put a price tag on, on this entire thing or the, or even the piece? I think you said you prioritize them in the plan. Is there a way to put a price tag on that? So, everybody understands, full transparency, that if we do this, it's going to cost this. And if we do this section of this piece or whatever, it's going to cost that. Is there a way to do something like that?
Yeah, so that's definitely possible. And really, I mean, the issue that you run into is just the timeframe in which you actually do it.
I understand. It's a start point though.
Yeah, that's the thing. Yeah, I mean...
I mean, if you were to look at this right here, I would say, you know, and I'll give you an example, right? So, I don't know. I would look at this, I would say twenty million dollars. I don't know. You know, another person might look at that and go, two million, you know? So, that's what I'm kind of after is you, you have a, you have a prioritizing. If I look at this plan, what is Priority One? How do I identify what Priority One is? Is that the yellow roads?
Yeah, so that would be on a different map that, I don't know.
So, ideally, when I look at the plan, I would see like three different levels. This is the fundamental. This is the backbone of the system, right? This is the main stuff. The next one is the, whoa, you know, this would be great if we connect these other items. And then, the third one is you're now into maybe an area, well, you know, it's not that critical.
Need to have, want to have, nice to have?
Yeah, like that. And the need to have costs about this much. It just seems to me a plan should always have that in it. And I think that communicates your concern too.
Yes.
Residents see that, and they go, wow, we love trails. Whoa, holy mackerel, that's a lot of money. And other residents might go, I didn't realize it'd be that cheap.
And, and they don't because it's our job to look at that, you know, and I, I understand where they're coming from. But in reality too, you're adding, you're adding more employees if you're taking care of sidewalks. You've got maintenance. You're going to have to all redo all of that someday. I mean, are we, when you quote our roads, are you going to start adding six feet on or...
We have to include that into our...
Because of the plan, right?
So, if we accept this, you're going to start including that in it?
You do it as an option probably?
It'd only be if the Public Works Committee would request that information.
Just that same thing. This is to repair that road, cost this. If you want to put a trail on, it's going to cost that, right? That's the sort of stuff. So, like with all this, is the high, low, and medium, is there a way to just apply a price tag to that? And just, I know it doesn't have to be exact because none of us really knows, you know, how much eminent domain is going to be involved. You know, we don't know.
And there is, but there's even more hidden costs behind that too. Because when you're widening those roads, what if you, there, there might be a lot of utilities in the way. You might even have to acquire some land. You know, like, there were a lot of roads on here that didn't have a paved shoulder that, that are projected to with this plan. So, how are you going to give it to us now? Are you going to give it to us? Like, I think Norfield, I don't know if it has paved shoulder now, but it, it's scheduled to next time or?
Each year, we still have discussions on each year's approved roads that we're going to be resurfacing and have that discussion similar to like what we did this year. We talked about widening White Pine Harbor Lights, and you know, we brought three diff, three or four different options to them with costs. You know, and it was up to the committee to recommend which one they wanted to see. We do that each year no matter what. We wouldn't just assume that we're going to start implementing this plan if it were approved. From my understanding, not what's going to happen. You know, there's a, you're probably not far off on twenty million dollars worth of stuff on that sheet. You know, that's not feasible here. So, we still handle each year based on each road's resurfacing, identify the costs, see if it's, what the level of importance is for those roads. Just because it's on the plan doesn't mean it's going to be supported.
You know, this is very similar to, to the last plan that we had. I mean, you still have to have a vision out there so that if a developer puts in a big subdivision, hey, this is part of our, our plan that we want a trail coming out of that subdivision leading to one of the main roads, or you know, a safety net for someone to funnel through. The developer can pay for that then too.
He's not going to pay to maintain it.
No.
I wasn't, I wasn't for the last one either.
And it's hard to, you can't put a price tag on this stuff because some roads have very steep ditches. And it would just cost a tremendous amount of money to widen it and re, redig a ditch. I mean, it doesn't make sense. So, you're not going to do a project like that.
And that's what would come up if, you know, if there was actually a price tag placed on the road. Right? We would look at a section, maybe a road that's a half mile long and go, wow, that's like five times more expensive than this mile-long one. So, that one automatically might move into the low priority for that reason. So, I'll leave it at that. I, I'm, I don't feel like the plan is complete without the financial side.
I think I would just chime in that I like the points that you all brought up. And this does also include strategies and ways to achieve some safety and potentially make things better also through looking at, you know, reduced speeds, there a way to make things to slow down traffic too. So, at least there's ways to achieve some of these things, I think, in a more low-cost way beyond just adding width. So, there are things to consider, you know, for each circumstance.
There was, when the Harbor Lights one came up for us to apply for, it would have actually costed more, I think, in the end. I mean, we would have gotten a lot, but even with, with what you submitted to them, you had to make a lot of assumptions because you didn't want to put the time into it necessarily.
It'd be extremely difficult to put a cost to that plan.
But it's still important, you know, just to...
With all the roads that are on there to, I mean, to have, even get you close on estimate, you gotta, you gotta survey the road. And we'd have to survey every one of those roadways and put some preliminary engineering together. You can't just throw a dollar a month at it and say, oh, it's fifty bucks a foot or something because it's going to be so drastically different.
And that's exactly why they don't typically include dollar amounts on that. Like, I'm not sure that that'd be even in your scope to provide that kind of data.
How would you know? How would he know? If we do it five years from now, we do it two years from now?
Yeah, you don't.
I mean, the prices are going to change.
But that's, you know, that was kind of my point too. When applying for that loan, you needed, you needed this, that on your trail plan. And, and the plan said that it was going to be a certain way, or we wanted it, we wished for it to be a certain way. And all the work isn't necessarily done there. But the excuse was, well, to be compliant with the plan, we have to do this. Or you approved this plan, so we have to do that. No.
By approving the plan, doesn't mean...
It doesn't, but it, it's, it'll be an argument.
Because everything has to get approved by the board yet. It doesn't mean we're, we're, we're doing one trail.
It's always an argument. It's always a way to try to convince you that it's a good idea, even...
Every topic is an argument.
When it's not.
Every topic is an argument. So, our current plan ran out. So...
How much of that current plan was implemented?
Zero.
Yeah, there you go. We spent like nothing.
And when was that plan created?
2010.
Yep.
And what year is it now?
Twenty twenty-two.
So, maybe the plan is off base and...
But there is something that is going to be done. It's going to be the trail on Lineville.
Okay.
That was in the plan.
And that's, and that's perfectly fine.
And...
But it, I, I don't like this.
Alex, can you remember on the funding on that?
On the actual cost of the path? Is that what you're asking?
Well, who was all responsible for that funding on, for that path?
Well, it'd be split between the villages of Swamaco Howard and then Brown County.
And Brown County.
And I know when Brown County applied for, I forget which grant they got, but they got a million dollars, I think it was from the state. And in that, in that grant application, they did reference, I think, our plan, our trail plan, even though it had technically expired. So, in theory, I mean, the way this is supposed to work, you have this vision for certain areas to get certain types of trails or bike paths. Once that's approved, you're able to say, hey, White Pine Road is scheduled for reconstruction in this, two years down the road. Andy goes to the Public Works Committee, says this is what it's going to cost. Public Works says, mm, looks good. If we can get funding for it, then we'll move forward. So, then we get a better understanding on the cost. That's when we spend all the time to figure out the cost. And then, you're able to go out and, and apply for grant opportunities, and you know what that cost is going to be. And if you're awarded the grants, then you move forward with the project. If you don't, you scrap it.
So, if nothing was implement, implemented, you don't think you guys went overboard with the plan? It's just, it's overboard. Yeah, Lineville, it's fine. That needs a multi-use trail or a sidewalk. That, that's understandable. But like a sidewalk in every subdivision and...
Where does it say that?
And it's a recommendation. Well, this should be in every subdivision. I, no, it shouldn't be. I, I mean, it's just, this plan is too extreme, and so was the last, and I'm voting against it.
I'm just in support of it for the reason of the, when this comes forward in grants, there is a possibility that they're going to be asked, do we have a plan? Do we have this inner plan? And we can bring it up. Yes, in the past, we've had residents come up to us and say, that's in our trail plan. And I would kind of explain to them, that's like circling stuff in the old J.C. Penney catalog saying you want it. It doesn't mean we're going to get it. I just think there's no, there's no real cost in it to us just to have it. And I agree with you that most of these residents, when they find out the cost of it, and we find out the cost of it, our answer historically has been no, and my answer usually in the future is going to be no on it because the cost really, you know, show enough benefit to enough people to make it worth our while. But I don't think it hurts to, you know, have a plan and keep it on file.
Are we, is there agreement, general agreement on the board that we should have a plan?
I think we should have a plan. I think we should.
Well, maybe it goes too far.
I, I'm not saying this plan. I'm just saying a plan. You should have a plan.
Maybe a plan, maybe. I don't know how far you're required to go because they always...
Well, we vary on the opinion on what that plan should be, but we do agree. Because, I mean, fundamentally, I want to make sure that we, we're all on the same page. I mean, I, I thought, I thought my responsibility as part of this board was to make sure that I had a plan for things like this. Maybe not necessarily this plan, but a plan. So, you know, that when something comes down the road like Lineville, and we can find funding for it, we have a plan to work against. Or we can go to Brown County and say, hey, Brown County, yes, we, you can reference our plan for this piece of it. So, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we feel, we feel strongly as a board that not only with this, but with other elements, that it's important for us as a village to have a plan.
But that, that's irrelevant tonight too because we're looking at this plan.
Well, I just want to make sure that, that for, for anyone watching on Facebook and for the community that they understand that this board supports planning and supports looking into the future. We may not all agree that this is the right plan today for this, but we agree that planning and looking forward is, is an important part of our tasks. That, that, that's all. You know, in term, in terms of, you know, in terms of this particular plan, you know, 2010 was the last time we had a plan. That was twelve years ago, and we didn't do anything on that plan. I started off sitting on Park and Rec, you know, during, during that, when we were talking trails. And there were a couple of members on that time, you know, on Park and Rec who were very strong about trails and about putting trails in. And the reason we didn't do anything on those trails and haven't done anything on those trails is we haven't had the money, period. So, was the plan bad or was the planning bad? I don't know that the plan itself is bad, but maybe the planning was bad that we have not made trails a priority. You know, not beyond roads. I agree with you, Trustee Eckert. You know, we talk about potholes. Potholes to me are a lot more important than a trail. I love trails. I'd love to bike on trails, but I don't want to be hitting potholes. And we've made that decision, and that's where we put our money is into roads. And I think maybe it was you, Trustee Romans, who said it, or Trustee Ward. You know, I, I'm going to be hard-pressed to vote for trails in the future. I want to, but they need to be financed appropriately, and they can't fall in a prioritization behind, ahead of roads, so.
Absolutely. Financed appropriately.
And see, I guess that, that's my, my big point to what Administrator Aker pointed out earlier was it's, it's, this is a process or an idea. But for me, when I was at that, at the public, the Parks and Recs meeting, not a person in that audience understood that coming into that.
not a person in that audience understood that coming into that. I don't think anyway. I remember the one lady in the very front, she was like, hey, I've been here for twenty-two years. You guys have talked about trails. You've talked about this. You never do it, right? And that's why I think a plan has to have the money side of it. It doesn't have to be surveyed. We, if you just use the twenty percent concept where we already, so for instance, Public Works, when you have planned and the budget we'll look at later tonight, all these roads, there's a number associated with each road. I don't understand why we are not able to actually do something similar to that so that the public understands that there is a price tag to it. They see the value in it. And then if at that point, it's no longer, here's a promise, if you come to Swamaco, you can, you can enjoy our awesome trails that we're gonna put in. Because that's what, that's what people think. When there's a plan, they think it's gonna happen. And so what I'm hearing is since two thousand and ten, we've had a plan in place and we've got one thing done?
Not yet.
Well, okay, but what was...
It's planned.
What was the point of that plan then? You know what I'm saying? Did we go out and get money to pay for those trails because of that plan? I mean, you see where I'm coming from, I hope. I, I feel like it's just not complete. And I know it's hard and maybe that's a sign of the whole concept in general. It costs money to do this kind of stuff. And you know what? It's gonna cost money to tell us how much money it's gonna cost.
Trustee Romus, you were at that meeting that night. We told everyone that just because we have this plan, some things cost too much. And we, we chose not to because of the cost.
Well, my point is that when they come into the room, they're not thinking that. When they come into the room, they're thinking, oh, we've got this cool plan we're gonna do. We got this awesome thing we're gonna do. And then ten years goes by, twenty years goes by, and nothing happens. And I want, I want to stop that cycle.
I, I get where you would want to have a price tag on it, but I think that would really limit the shelf life on that plan. Because I think of when we adopted it in two thousand and ten, well, by two thousand and twelve, any numbers you put out there, especially today...
Not a percentage, not twenty percent.
But then in that year, we would have to figure out that cost and then put the twenty percent on that cost that year. So for us to put it on today would give anything we're putting out, any number we're putting out, would be irrelevant two years later. Where now we still had that same plan without a cost attached to it. That same plan is out there for, for twelve years and nothing really changed with the plan. But if you put a dollar amount today on the cost of the trail building and especially to spend money to try to get a, a cost on those, I think it would give you this plan a shelf life that was really short.
Although I agree with what you're saying, that the, the numbers would change. It's easier for me and for any citizen to look at the plan and realize that the prices were two thousand and twenty-two prices and now it's twenty twenty-six, so we're gonna pay more than it is for that same me or the citizen to look at the plan later and go, oh, my gosh, I didn't realize it was gonna cost four million dollars to do this.
And I think if you don't have the plan on there and then when a subdivision is being built and, but it's already on your plan and then you discuss it on a case-by-case basis, you say, yes, we're possibly discussing moving forward with it. In today's dollars, it's this. It'll be X additional dollars to make that, this happen and then make the decision at that time. But if you put a price tag on every wishlist item they came up with today, by the time that subdivision comes in line, it'll, the number will be kind of relevant and you'd have to do it over again.
Was the Lineville piece on the two thousand and ten plan? Twenty-ten plan?
Yeah, I think so.
Did, did it have a price?
No, there were no price estimates in that.
So, so had we not planned for Lineville in two thousand and ten, would we be talking about Lineville today, a trail?
Yes, yes.
Probably.
Definitely. Because we've been talking about it, even with or without the plan, we've been talking about setting money. We've been talking about Lineville for years now and it doesn't have a damn thing to do with the plan.
It's actually a low priority. It's right there in yellow.
Lineville was a low priority.
It's right there in yellow.
So my point is, that's what we have here. You know, when we talk about this, you know, you're looking at things that might be ten years down the road. We don't know. You, you're looking at things that are low priorities that might be a high priority or might become, might, we might have the ability to do. If we erase this and take all the colors off and have nothing on here and we really have no plan, nothing highlighted whatsoever, we have nothing to go back to like we did to go back to, to have Lineville, which we have today and is going to be done. So.
And that's why typically in these plans, you want more than less. You want more recommendations than less.
So that's actually a good segue into my conversation piece of this. Do I believe that we need to have a plan? Absolutely. We gotta have a plan. You have to have a plan. If we're gonna get any funding in the future, you have to have a plan together. But I, and, and thank you for everybody that worked on this, but I can probably count seven different areas in this map that will never happen.
Oh, absolutely.
But, but there's several, several areas that go through that adamantly, people, Tarragon Trail, people are adamantly against anything being in their backyards. So why is it on this map? When you look at the ATC corridor going up Veltb Avenue, ATC will never grant us access to their corridor on their power lines.
Actually, they will.
Not through, not through all these wetlands.
Well, that would be a DNR issue.
It would be a huge issue. That's why they had all that mapped down on that whole corridor.
But it is, your point, it is, they would work with the village on that specific area.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean we're doing it.
But here, here's what I'm saying is, why, why do we have, I'll give you one other example. We have a green line that goes through Urban Edge, then goes through the land that the village owns, which is standing wetland waters. Like, I, I think, and I don't want to say the word lazy, but this, this plan, it's essential to have a plan, but let's have a plan that's more organized. You know, when we have a land, when we, when we have a line going through pure one hundred percent wetlands, that's not even a wishlist item. I mean, so I think we need to do some, a little bit more work on this plan so that it actually makes sense. I mean, there's, there's several areas in here that go through private property. I, I just, I understand all the purple areas. Those are fine. But there's a lot of areas in here that, that I have big question marks on. You know, there's another one, number one. That's, there's a lot of wetlands in there. Are you ever gonna get that road, are you ever gonna get a trail put in there without extreme costs and DNR red tape and everything else? So I, I just feel like we need to do a little bit better job with this. If we're gonna have a plan together, let's do it right and have a viable plan and not just a bunch of lines. I think, well, I think I'd love to have a, you know, something there. Well, something there will never happen.
Number one is probably sitting on the old railroad bed. It's probably completely out of wetlands.
That was in the origin, this first plan.
Right. Well, there was a bunch in the first plan that I didn't agree with either. Yes, that is the, that is the old railroad and, and no, it's not out of wetlands anymore.
The bed itself should be.
Okay.
If it's still there.
Part of it's still there. I hunt part of it.
I mean, we had, we had Andy from the Public Works, Joe, Chief Burtler from Fire Department, safety type reasons, Chief Pasani, or Deputy Pasani, Rob Zastro from Planning and Zoning, myself, Roy Kraus from the Trail Committee, Park and Rec.
Nikki from Brown County Parks.
Nikki from Brown County Parks. Devin was in on it.
I'll be honest with you.
I don't think, I think, I think we're...
Some of it up.
I think you're, you're over, over, overthinking this. I mean...
I don't disagree with you. I just, I don't want to spend more on the plan. I want to have a plan in place so that when we have an opportunity for funding, but I think to clean it up, to get rid of some of that stuff, to keep moving it forward, I think there will be more cost to develop this plan. And I, myself, one voice, I, I don't want to spend any more money on it. I mean, we didn't spend a lot to this point and I don't want to spend any money on it. But I want to have something in place so that, I can tell you from being on the Planning and Zoning Board of Directors, when there's some federal project or some extra money that's left over, we can point to something and say, that. So then that, that expensive project becomes somewhat more reasonable, somewhat more attainable.
And I don't disagree with that, but, oh, by the way, we did complete one other thing, Harbor Lights Bridge. There is a pedestrian path on the north end.
Very nice one.
Yes.
It doesn't go very far, but it's very nice.
I, I just think that we need to clean this up. And I don't disagree, but how much would it cost to, to have a little bit more thought go into some of these? To go, is that ever a viable option because of wetlands?
Well, then we don't approve it. We don't, we don't approve it when that if and when that ever comes to the table. You just don't approve it then. To spend more money at this point on this plan is taxpayers' money that's not being well spent. And then that's why it's hard to put all these estimates on it also of what these would cost. Because we would have to, it's still gonna be taxpayers' money for someone to draft up estimates. That is ridiculous at this point.
So there's a couple of things I've heard, a couple of things I've heard. So we're all in agreement that a plan is necessary and we're happy to have a plan. The contention that I've heard is with regard to this particular plan for different reasons. Some, some the viability of certain trails that have been highlighted, others, the viability of the plan in general. And that this is just not a viable format in general. Also, the cost elements of it. So there's a number of different things, but the issues that have been brought up tonight with regard to this plan are not about the plan, not about a plan, but about this particular plan. So the vote that we have this evening is on this particular plan and I would just highlight one thing. This plan in, in the Resolution two-two-zero-three-one, one of the whereas is, one of the many whereas is, is whereas the Village of Swamaco two thousand and twenty-three Trail Pedestrian Bicycle Plan will complement the two thousand and fifteen Village of Swamaco Comprehensive Plan. So at least in my mind, as I'm framing this, we need to vote this evening on whether this is an appropriate complement to the two thousand and fifteen Village of Swamaco Comprehensive Plan. That's the vote before us.
Well, what, what frustrates me, I mean, I, I am a very planning person. I just am. And you want to force me into saying we need a plan because you can't just be without a plan. Where we're gonna, we may approve this tonight because we have to have a plan and we don't want to spend any more money on a plan. Well, if that's the only reason for having a plan, maybe a plan is, you see what I'm saying here? That's, we're sounding ridiculous. And so don't hold me to me saying I need a plan if we're gonna continue this ridiculousness.
All of this was available by July? By July. This, this was all online, available. And...
And all before you started too. I asked...
No one brought up any, anything.
I brought up...
In all these meetings. And there, and there was the survey that went out for the community. And this whole map was set by July.
I brought up before you guys started the survey that there would be a money question or, or, or an element to it that would, or despite the cost of, or something, something where there would be a money element to it. And there wasn't. And Trustee Romus, you know, he brought up good points with that too. And I brought it up before you guys started anything. At least clue people in as to how much these wishes cost. Give them an idea. It's always gonna be a lot. And I, just, just vote on the plan already.
I, I would like to, but I just need, I feel, I feel pressed to make two more points because I think that they were incorrectly characterized, grossly incorrectly characterized. So in, in the first place, no one is pressing you or anyone else to accept a plan. That's your decision.
You are. You said, we can all agree that we, we...
We just sat here, if you re-rolled the tape, we just sat here and all agreed that a plan was necessary, that we, a plan, we all agree in planning. We can rewind that. You can re-listen to it. You nodded your head just like everybody else. That's the only thing. I didn't say, "Trustee Eckert, please vote for the plan," nor would I ever think to. It's completely your option. I'm not making you, I'm not bending your arm. You didn't vote for the first plan. You're not gonna support this plan. I think that's great. I think that's great. No issue with it. In terms of ridiculousness, if you want to refer to ridiculousness, again, I would go back to the tape. And I didn't frankly understand what point you were trying to make. And I assumed it was just me, so I would never say that that was ridiculous. I, I just, it was my inability to understand you. I, I think that at this point, what we have before us is a vote. And the vote is to complement, a complement to the two thousand and fifteen Village of Swamaco Comprehensive Plan. That's the vote. So if you don't like the plan, vote against it. If you don't like this plan, vote against it. I mean, it's, it's that simple. So if there's other comments, please make them now. Otherwise, let's look for a motion.
What would the additional cost be to, to clean a couple of these areas up?
Well, I guess, what are you, when you talk about cleaning it up, what, what would you...
Okay, so we look at Calavera Springs. You can see it, number nine. There's a green line in there that goes through Cal, the edge of Calavera, then through someone's woods. That's all private property. Maybe Mr. Dunks knows something that I don't know, but that's all private property in there.
It doesn't mean that's going to happen, but if that was to ever become a subdivision, their wish, their wish would be for a trail to be there.
Okay, well, then I can put a line through all sorts of private property on a map. I mean, it just, it, that's the part I don't get. Like, who the hell thought of this line here to put, to put something there?
Because it comes out of your park. This is just a big wishlist. It's all it is.
There's existing trails there. And some of those are like operated railroads currently. It doesn't mean in thirty years they're not gonna be operational and we may get some federal grant money to develop that unusable track as a trail.
It is all open land, Dan, and I, I understand that. But if that gets developed, now we have it in there, that it would be a safe way for kids to get to the park. There's a trail that leads towards the park. That's, that's part of the vision that we, we were thinking of.
If you don't have a wishlist to connect to Lineville or to the County J trails that exist or are going to exist in the next two to three years, what good are those trails? What good is the Lineville Trail if we never connect anything to it? You're not gonna drive to Tow Line so you can walk to Quick Trip. I mean, if you've already driven, you're gonna get your car and drive to the next location. The, the purpose of the wishlist is for future connectivity and that's all it's for. You're gonna have a sidewalk along County Highway J like you have right now that goes past Idlewild Park and goes two blocks down, three blocks down and ends. It's a trail to nowhere.
The funny part, the best part of what you just said was someone at the Parks and Recs Committee made that same comment. It's like, I need to drive to a certain part, point to get onto a trail. And Trustee Andrews, I know I've had time to look at this before, but it didn't really occur to me until I was at that meeting that a lot of people look at this plan and they believe this plan is going to happen. And right now, from my perspective, we're gonna be here ten years from now and we're gonna be in the same spot. And I, I would love to find a way around that, to find another source of revenue. I realize that the point is that you can maybe get funding for it or whatever. But I don't, I just see this as, as almost like, I don't want to use that. It, it's almost like building people's hopes up and then we're not even planning on doing it. So without price tags that, and I, I've said enough. Thank you.
If there's other, no other comments, I'd look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two-two-zero-three-one, a resolution adopting the Village of Swamaco Trail Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven. And based on because our current one is expired.
Second. Where does it say, two thousand and twenty-seven? Oh, I see it. Sorry, in the top, it's right in front of my pot. Please. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Trustee Andrews to approve Resolution... Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from trustee Andrews to approve resolution two-two-zero-three-one, adopting the Village of Swamaco Trail Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-seven. And we have a second from trustee Ward. Are there any other further comments or discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two.
Three nay.
Four, three.
Four three.
Four three, sorry, four three.
I'd like to just thank Devin and everybody on the committee that put in their time to, to do this project.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Devin.
Yeah, I would like to thank you as well, appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, Nick.
You're welcome.
All right. You guys on the, on this side must sing in the choir, cause your voices are almost perfect in tune.
They warmed up beforehand.
Me, 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 me. All right, moved on.
I didn't get his joke.
Let's see. We are going to item number seven, consent agenda.
Nope.
Uh, I had ten A after seven and before eight.
Yeah, sorry, my bad, yes, your bad, my bad.
Okay.
My bad.
Only happened again. Consent agenda, item A, previous minutes of the village board, eleven-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and item B, October twenty-twenty-two treasures report. Are there questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion from trustee Eckert to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Ward. Any further discussion or comment from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero, thank you. Now, per the change to the agenda, we will move on to item ten A before item eight. Item ten A, public works item, Harbor Lights Reserve Drainage Study. Director Smits, if you would.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna give a little background here on the situation and what we're trying to work through here to remedy, uh, this area over here in Harbor Lights Reserve. So Harbor Lights Reserve subdivision is right across the road on Velp Avenue here across Velp. It's the eastern end of Brackton Road. So when this subdivision was originally designed, I don't think, or it was designed and approved, I don't know if it was by the county and the town at the time. But the, it sat for a period of time before it was built, after the design was approved. And then before it was actually constructed, the, the developer had to submit a stormwater management plan to the DNR for review. And with that came, uh, this, this drainage way or this, uh, stone weir that we're looking at on the screen, uh, was part of the erosion control measure and the peak flow control of the site. So back in twenty, or two thousand-ish, I think it's about when it went in, there was no, um, treatment needed for water such as there may. But the DNR did require the site to be in peak flow control and have an erosion control. So that's what you see, that the wider area in the middle of the screen is actually break or run. And then the part that looks like a little road that kinda circles or makes through it is a, is a berm. All built to control water from entering the wetlands there on the southeast corner during construction. Uh, so the subdivision was built, the berm was built, the stone was in place. And, uh, maybe fifteen, eighteen years later, uh, we've got a handful of houses built in there now. Primarily on, if you look at your plat that was in your packet, lots thirty-six, thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-two, and possibly thirty-one. So those, those would be the lots that are affected by what, uh, what we're seeing out there now. So, after it was built, everybody, uh, has established yard, vegetation has grown up. But now, all the water that was originally intended to flow that way, uh, still flows that way, but it gets to that berm. Needs to become elevated to a point and it overtops that berm. So in the process, it backs up, uh, into that area, pretty much fills that entire area in the south end of lot thirty-three. Probably fills some of the lots next door. Looks like a small tributary or creek flowing through there during times of, you know, having a rain. And then of course you throw in the equation frost and other means of where water can infiltrate like it does in summer, which is adds to the problem. So the next sit, or issue with it all is on the grading plan. In some of the original design work, there was easements that were laid out. But then on the final plat that was recorded, uh, there's very few easements that you'll actually see on the final recorded plat. So that, that's an issue. The village presumed that, you know, we hold liability and responsibility yet. We had intent that those easements were there. We could take action to try to correct the situation, knowing, you know, there is potential damages to neighboring properties. Again, there was the intent of either those easements should be there or shouldn't be there, it's just really not that clear, even, even as to be. So, kind of boiled this all down, we went through committee, I don't know, a handful of times. And, uh, we made communication with the property on the southeast corner, which is a, which is the Northeast Wisconsin Land Trust. Made contact with them, you know, asked them if, what their thoughts were on, on removing the stone. So, we believe removing the stone would solve the problem, you know, by getting rid of that elevation there and lessening it to, originally, what's on both sides. Water should pass freely and make its way to the wetlands, uh, you know, and get rid of what they see in the backyard. We, we think that's gonna work. The Northeast Land Trust has some concerns, and rightfully so. So we're to a point where we think we need to have a drainage study done of the area and of that eastern end of the subdivision and with properties outside the subdivision, uh, just to know the impacts if we were to remove that stone weir. If there's any potential flooding or any potential, uh, other areas of concern, you know, either to the south, cause there's another part of the subdivision is to the south. We don't wanna impact anybody else negatively, you know, more so than what's been done already. So we're trying to correct the situation for everybody that is a stakeholder in that area or owns property in that area or has a home. So we think if we have a drainage study performed, um, to show what it's doing with the weir and what it would do without the weir, and a twenty-five and a one-hundred-year storm event, you know, that should be a pretty good indication of what to expect when that stone is gone.
So, you, you just referenced, who would be concerned about the removal of the stone?
The, uh, the group that owns the property in the southeast corner, which is the Northeast Wisconsin Land Trust. They're the property owners.
Okay, so that's the.
So the stone weir is on their property, so really, they have to give us permission, number one. You know, we can't just make entry at this point and remove it. Cause it's, we don't have a clear, we have an intent of an easement, I think legally, we could probably force our way on, they're saying the intent was there, we had this documentation. But we would prefer to be neighborly and, and just get an agreement from them, which they will.
Who owns the, who, actually?
The Land Trust. No idea. Northeast Wisconsin Land Trust is a group of investors, I think, that own it.
Who built the weir?
Uh, the developer. Well, the contractor for the developer.
So I think what was originally built though, if I remember correctly, that, that, uh, land was not deeded or whatever to the.
Correct, so at the time, the subdivision was built, that, uh, Mick, the developer, which was, um, McColey.
Wade McColey.
He owned that part of property yet. So even after the development went in, he still owned that property with the weir on it, so it was no big deal for him at the time.
So he sold it to this?
Correct, he deed, I think.
He deeded it over.
Cause it's, it was all wetland.
Right.
So, it wasn't worth a lot, he, I'm sure had something, some incentive to give.
That's great.
Yes.
Okay. And so those people have come forward with concern?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I, we reached out to them, you know, if this was an option and, you know, what their thoughts were on it, and they're not against it as long as necessary action, uh, is taking place to prevent any, you know, negative impacts as you go south or east.
You're, you're asking for us to approve the study?
Yep.
And then, would we be the ones removing it?
So I think we could probably remove the stone with our staff, hopefully, uh, we don't have any problems with that. We may have to rent a piece of equipment, but we should be able to remove the stone. So if the study indicates positive results, we're good to go, we're not gonna negatively impact anybody downstream, or I shouldn't say downstream, but anywhere else in the area. Come a reasonable time of when we can get in there, we would remove the stone. First of all, get permission from the Land Trust, show them the study, and get their okay to go on there. Remove the stone, let the water pass the way it should or we believe it should. And then we would also clean up all the easements that are either there or are not there. So we have storm sewer along lots thirty-one and thirty-two, um, which we don't have an easement over, but we have a storm sewer pipe there. We should have an easement over that. So what you're looking at right there is the drainage plan. On the drainage plan, it shows the easement, but on the final recorded plat, it does not. So we need to clarify the easements. Record those correctly, and vacate, um, possibly vacate a small piece, and then relinquish our rights to the drainage easement seven area that calls out that drainage basin. So there would be some follow-up work to do after the stone is removed, and we know, we believe we're done correcting the area, or correcting the issue in the area.
So that drainage easement seven, that's the blue dash line that takes up a big chunk of thirty-two, thirty-three? Have you gone out, or anyone gone out and measured, actually checked the elevation of the stone weir?
I haven't personally measured it, but we just did a bunch of topo in there about two weeks ago. Uh, that was part of what areas we needed to perform the study. I didn't figure out if it.
Okay.
But there is elevations on there, it's around five feet.
Okay.
Based on those elevations that were given from when it was installed.
That'll come out in the wash with the, the study.
Just to give the board some background too, I think Matt reached out, and Matt's in the audience, I think he reached out to me, uh, was that this spring, way back when?
It was way early.
March, yeah, so. Yep, absolutely, that's where, that's where I was going with it. So we started this way back when, and I've been included in all these emails between Andy and Matt throughout all these months. I haven't commented a whole lot, I've just been reading and, and, uh, cause these two have gone back and forth with a lot of great information. So, um, if there's no other comments by the board, I'd like to make a motion to open it up for public comment.
I'll second that.
There's a motion to open this up for public comment by trustee Rodden, and a second by trustee Romus. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven-zero. Sir, if you'd like to come forward and speak, please provide your name and address and. He left right here. I remember this.
Yeah.
Earlier this year.
I am Matt Rude, I'm the property owner at twenty-twenty-seven Brackton Road, which is the, kind of the crescent-shaped lot thirty-three on the map that you're looking at right now. Um, I guess, first of all, I just kinda wanted to make myself available to kinda fill in any gaps, answer any questions. We moved to the property a year and a half ago, it was last year, June. And we, at the time, didn't really, we knew that there was kind of a berm back there, but we didn't know what it was, why it was there, what its purpose was, and I contacted the village then, and that's what kind of got this whole ball rolling. At the time, the village wasn't even kinda sure what that was or why it was there until they started doing some digging and pulling up some of the plats and maps and, and realized that it was a temporary erosion control structure that had still remained after the subdivision was all built out. And, uh, we started observing that when it would rain, it would get really spongy for about the back, probably quarter to a third of an acre of our lot. That particular parcel is point eight of an acre. So we're a little over three-quarters of an acre. And didn't kinda think much of it at first, uh, just realized that when it would rain even a little bit, I wouldn't be able to mow my lawn for a week, week and a half afterwards, cause it was just a giant sponge back there. And then we started getting a couple of bigger rainfalls where maybe we'd get an inch of rain, and we noticed the rivers of water coming in from three different directions and then filling up my backyard to a depth in some places of over two feet, um, especially back towards that retention structure. My property line goes pretty close to the, to the berm, but not all the way to the berm, since the berm is on the adjacent property owner's property. Yeah, I, I have pictures and video kinda showing everything, I didn't bring any of that tonight, but, um, I have that available if the board would be interested in seeing kinda what that looks like, to put a visual to it. But, um, I will say that as a result of the berm still being in place, if it was supposed to be removed fifteen years ago, or, or whenever they deemed that that part of the subdivision was completed, the landscape of that parcel has changed pretty dramatically from what's shown even on the, the picture that you had up there. I don't know if you have that available, but kind of the zoom, um, aerial Brown Dog, I guess, there, yeah. So there you can see, this imagery was from pretty early on. If I remember correctly, I think this layer was around like two thousand and five on Brown Dog. And you can see that my whole parcel there, um, is, is clear, there's no trees, there's no shrubs, there's nothing on it. If you were to look at a newer layer on Brown Dog, you'd see that all the way up to about where those forty-five degree curves in the property lines are, of where it says my name. If you drew a line right across the parcel going northeast from there, it's all filled in with wetland-type vegetation from the other side of the berm, and it retains water pretty much all the time now. Even though that's not designated as DNR wetland, it has just kinda filled in that way because that berm is still there. So, um, what kinda kicked all this off in the first place is I have a total of one drainage easement that runs along that southern property line that's labeled one-twenty-four-point-six-six, I think there. Uh, there's like a fifteen-foot drainage easement presumably for the stormwater discharge to, to go down and make its way into the wetland. And I, I would like to build a small outbuilding probably next year in my backyard in land that is not in easements or setbacks. And right now, when we get big rainfalls, there's six inches of water where I'd like the building to go. I've either gotta put it four feet up in the air, or something has to be corrected with this drainage situation. I think that's all that I probably had to speak on. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have for me.
Have you had any contact with the Northeast Wisconsin Land Trust folks?
I called them once, Julie, I think was her name, and she had to kinda kick it up the food chain to her director, and Andy kinda got involved at that point and has communicated back and forth with the director.
Okay.
I, I, I don't have any questions for you. Does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Rude? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I think this is, I think it's prudent to do a study on it. You know, the only question I had on the study, you know, there's a cost laid out here on the study. Was there, was there a number of hours associated with that?
Uh, I don't think I saw hours, but.
I didn't see hours in it.
Craig put the study together, or the proposal together, so if you have any questions as it relates to this proposal, Craig would be here to answer.
Do you have money to cover this in your budget?
What's that?
You have money?
Uh, so we didn't, this wasn't a planned expense, uh, for twenty-twenty-three, but we do have a balance in our pond sinking cleaning fund of about two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand. So that would support, you know, completing this study.
I one-hundred percent support this, it needs to get done.
We need to close.
Potential liability. Oh, sorry, yeah, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion on the floor to close public comment from trustee Rodden, and a second by trustee Schneider, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero, thank you.
It seems that we have, um, concurrence here, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Arizona Associate to evaluate the stormwater drainage of Harbor Lights Reserve area if the berm were to be removed for a total cost of ten thousand one hundred dollars to be funded by the Stormwater Pond Cleaning Sinking Fund.
Second. So there's a motion to approve the Arizona Associate's evaluation of stormwater drainage for the Harbor Lights Reserve area at a cost of ten thousand?
One hundred dollars.
Yeah, is, is that, is that just a question? So that's the exact cost, or is that a not to exceed?
It should be a not to exceed.
Let's just, no, no, it's, it's written that way though. Let's, let's just change that though with the one change.
To not to exceed ten thousand one hundred dollars.
Thank you. So we have the motion on the floor to approve the evaluation of stormwater drainage, Harbor Lights Reserve area if the berm were to be removed at a cost of ten thousand, a cost not to exceed ten thousand one hundred dollars to be funded by Stormwater Pond Cleaning Sinking Fund. Is there a second? I get a second from trustee Schneider. Are there any other comments, um, or questions from the board?
I see this as a, more or less a good way to avoid Murphy's Law one oh four. The unintended consequences of just blowing through it and then finding out you just ruined a bunch of bigger things.
Fair enough. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero, thank you. Does this, we're spending, it's an expenditure of ten thousand, not to exceed ten. Does this, we're spending, it's an expenditure of ten thousand, not to exceed ten thousand one hundred dollars, because it's, of, of it being an expenditure.
Really should be roll call.
That's what I thought. Can we go back and redo that?
We can.
So I'd, I'd like to go back and just pointing out that this is an unforeseen expenditure. Look for that roll call vote. Madam clerk, if you would.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Aye.
Trustee Romas?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Venrazza?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you.
Good catch, sir.
Avoid those. Murphy Law one oh four.
That's right.
I'll just remember that.
One oh four, B, paragraph two.
All right.
That's a whole different.
So moving on, that was ten A. We are now moving on to item eight. Eight. Eight A Finance Items Resolution two-two-zero-two-six, setting to twenty-twenty-three sewer service rates and amending fee schedule. Director Lee Joyce.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to bring the budget documents up on the screen. It's just easier to see everything that way, I think. Everything that's going to be up here was also included in your board packets. So you should have in your packets line-by-line operating budgets, capital projects by department and fund, a debt summary, financial operating statements for each utility, financial metrics, a water impact fee fund statement, and then a couple of documents that look at the changes to the sewer rate. So one is the fee schedule changes, one is the year-to-year comparison, one looks at the historical rate increases for the sewer utility. So it's a lot of information, and I just want to focus on the highlights tonight. So I'm going to go right to the operating for the water fund. And for the water fund, there's, there's been no rate increase since twenty nineteen. We did file the PSC rate case last week, that, of course, was approved to file by the board at the last meeting. We requested a rate of return of four-point-nine percent, which calculates to a rate increase of thirteen-point-five percent. The PSC already responded to our filing, letting us know that their benchmark rate of return is actually six-point-six percent. So we should expect that that rate increase will be somewhat higher than the thirteen-point-five percent. On the water operation and maintenance expenses, we are looking at overall increases of six-point-nine percent. A few things to highlight would be the increased water testing requirements for PFAS, water softener rehab and maintenance, some pager pay changes that Andy will talk about later this evening, leak repairs and a transmitter purchase for meter reads. And I'll just scroll down on here and show you where those increases are highlighted. So account six oh two and six oh five, and then down in six forty. Some of this is kind of small print even for me. Six fifty-two, and then an account, the customer service account expense. And I think those are the main change areas for the water utility.
Real quick, Andy, who is, who's having us do the PFAS testing?
On the DNR.
But is required, is it a requirement now?
Wow.
It didn't take long.
Yep, it's a combination of the EPA and DNR, but it is on our sampling schedule, but it's set forth by the DNR each year.
Are they setting what lab you have these?
Uh, no, we could take, we usually use Northern Lights for all of our stuff, so.
And do we budget for that now, too?
Yep, so that's part of the.
Thank you.
First line, yes.
Yes.
It's like, it'll be like just over ten thousand probably next year for just sampling. But it's, we have all of our other samples required for the year, too. It's a heavy year for our sampling with that added on top. It's going to be a little bit more.
I just, and, and some of you guys know what PFAS is, some of you don't. It, those results could impact a lot, and when you're looking at parts per trillion, that could be detrimental to our water system here. Just a brief example, and I think I told you this, Andy, last year, a local company sent samples to two different labs and got completely different results off of the same testing, or the same actual samples, so. Are, are you, are your guys going to actually pull the samples? Are we going to have somebody?
Nope, we'll, we'll fill all the bottles.
Whoever's doing it, don't have them shower for about three weeks?
Good. Cross-contamination.
Don't have them wear Gore-Tex boots?
Just like any other sampling.
Well, there, there is a special protocol.
Yeah.
Yep, follow the directions.
Okay.
It's crazy.
Glad you know about it. Okay. What else?
Okay, on the sewer utility side, we are looking at a rate increase of four-point-four percent. As you can see on this top line here, we're going from nine dollars and forty-eight cents to nine dollars and ninety cents per thousand gallons. Last year, the rate increase was two-point-nine percent. For operation and maintenance expenses overall, we're looking at a small increase of one-point-four percent. A couple of highlights on the sewer side would be the sewer impact fee study, the pager pay changes again, and then also the transmitter purchase for meter reads. So N E W Water was here this evening with their presentation. I'm just going to point out in this line here that there is actually a three-point-two percent decrease in our charges for twenty-twenty-three. That still remains about forty-four percent of our total operating expenses. And then I will also point out at the top that there is a projected decrease in industrial revenue for twenty-twenty-three. We did look at the actual billings through quarter three to determine those estimates. Anything on the operating before I flip over to capital? You can always come back at the end, too.